Good evening. The May 8, 2025 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. And please, let's kick it off. Won't you join me for saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think we can take role at this point. I'm going to start by asking who's on the phone because I know we have at least one, maybe two trustees on the phone.
So trustee Jennings is on the phone.
Okay, so we have trustee Jennings, trustee Ratan, trustee Hamel, and I am here as well. So we do have a quorum. We'll proceed then with our agenda. And first up is awards and recognitions. And Dr. Korbe, who do we have to visit with tonight?
Okay, so I'm happy to introduce to you Oliver Gonzalez. Go ahead and come up, Oliver. And I had a chance to talk to him just a little bit, but he's going to share his story and tell us a little bit about why he's here.
So obviously, my name is Oliver Gonzalez. I'm a dual-degree student here at JCCC. So what that means is I'm currently enrolled at Blue Bay Northwest as well as Johnson County Community College, and I'm able to take all my classes here at Johnson County Community College. I'm pursuing a liberal arts degree here, and I'm involved in the JCCC Student Senate as well as the JCCC MUN, all U of I nations. I just recently got the presidency here at the Student Senate for next year. And after Johnson County Community College, I plan to go into a four-year university to pursue a mechanical engineering degree.
You know, I feel like we know you because you're like the third in a line of Gonzalez. It's so nice to meet you. Any questions or comments for Oliver? Thank you. Go ahead.
I said welcome.
Oh, I had to do a double take. I wasn't sure who I was looking at. I'll hear your brother for a minute.
Well, congratulations on your presidency of Student Senate. It's a big job, and you've got some big shoes to fill because your predecessor has truly been a delight over the time that we've been hearing from him. So we look forward to hearing from you for the next year or so, and I'm sure that you'll have lots of things to tell us over the coming months. So thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the Open Forum section. The Open Forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, and in that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, shall be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. There is one registered speaker at tonight's meeting, so I'm going to call Professor Tim Hamilton to the podium. And prior to beginning, any comments? Would you please state your name and your city and state of residency?
Hi, Professor Tim Hamilton. I'm an economics professor here. My state of residency is in Kansas. What else?
The city.
Oh, the city. I reside in Lawrence, Kansas. Congratulations, Master Gonzalez, on your award. I was wanting to highlight to the board something that I see because I swim in the waters of economics. I also have a firm where I do economic analysis. And we see the signs of an impending recession. The Federal Reserve referred to this yesterday in the open notes of the Open Market Committee. We're seeing a lot of layoffs around the country. DHL, UPS, Solantis, Subaru, Cleveland Cliff Metals, 29,000 in Big Tech last month. And I could go on, in addition to the Doge layoffs, which were another quarter million. So we've had 600,000 layoffs since the first of the year. We also see the slowing in the economy in oil futures, and that's probably the real canary in the coal mine because that's some of the smartest money on planet Earth that is seeing our economy slow down. I mention that because if it is true that we have a recession that is impending, one of the things that almost always follows is a reduction in the price of houses. We see assessment values drop in a recession. Pandemic being aside, because that was a different type of recession altogether. In the normal business cycle, we see housing prices go down. And I just think the board needs to have this information going forward when you're looking at your budget. Because if you're going to see housing prices go down and property taxes are the source of revenue, you kind of need to know that. If that weren't bad enough for you, the troubles you also have are the costs going up for almost all supplies courtesy of the tariffs that we're seeing. So you're seeing your expenses go up, and I'm just giving you the hint that down the road, you could see housing prices go down and thus tax revenues from those houses go down. And you don't have to believe me, you can go to the, any real estate, your own real estate agents, who are all very sophisticated individuals. You can also look on the Internet and look at the number of days that houses are on the market. As of this month, in Overland Park, 35 days for the average house. A year ago, at this time, it was 18. A year before that, it was 12. So you're starting to see this slowing that's happening. So we'll probably see property values go down. So at least file that away. And I just wanted, as a member of our community, to give you guys that information. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
What was his name again? Sorry, I arrived late.
Tim Hamilton.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our Open Forum section, and we'll proceed to the board reports. And Logan Grigsby, will we be hearing from you tonight? All right.
Good evening, Distinguished Board. I'd like to say that first, I feel like I'm the only person in the room who hopes property values go down so I can hopefully buy a home one day. I feel like everybody's a little flustered about losing some of that property value, but as a renter, it kind of feels a little bit good. Hopefully, my rent get will get slashed a couple hundred dollars. So it's only been a couple weeks, so I don't have too much for you guys. But we had a really awesome service week. This is one of our projects where we give back every year. We volunteer throughout the last week of April, kind of into the first week of May. We worked with JCCC's Clear and Connect program, working with the students and the members of Clear and Connect to kind of work with them, kind of see what their day-to-day classroom activities look like, and kind of participate in some of their classroom activities. Another project we did was Growing Futures, where we went to a local early development learning child care center and kind of worked with them. And that was another thing that we're super, super proud of. And lastly, we did a hygiene kit drive for the Midwest Trust Recovery Center. Addiction is something that personally hits, always hits me in the heart, so it's really nice to know that we are doing what we can to help the local community dealing with addiction and things like that. Next, we worked Cav Craze. That was yesterday. We kind of set up a table, tried to get some new senators. We fortunately, unfortunately, have 10 senators graduating out here in a couple weeks, so we're super, super excited about that. But Oliver may not be so excited because that means he's losing some very, very excellent senators and very, very excellent hard workers. So we have been working very, very hard with them for the last couple weeks to make sure that the new exec board is super prepared, super ready to go, and have all the tools and knowledge and experience as possible coming in to be the new exec board. So I am really proud of Oliver, and I know he's going to make an amazing president going on next year. So that about does it for my report. With that being said, I'd just like to say how honored and privileged it is to have been here, working with you guys for the last year, and I'm just, without words to say, how happy I've been with how successful this year has been.
Thank you. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Among the many great joys that this college has brought me, and not to be transactional, but you're among them, and I sure do appreciate you. Addiction hits you in the heart. May I ask why?
Yeah, so I believe when I first came, for my student spotlight, I kind of introduced this topic. When I first started going to school here, I had a baby sister, and she, unfortunately, she passed from fentanyl overdose. So obviously, this is something that always has kind of meant something, has touched something for me. My sister was only 20 years old when she passed, so it personally connects with my heart. She didn't mean to kind of go out and do drugs. She was just a person struggling with substance abuse issues and kind of was just going through a traumatic time in her life. She was getting out of an abusive relationship and stuff like that. And fortunately, as we see these days, seven out of 10 pills are laced with fentanyl and stuff like that. So it only takes one bad decision, one bad night, and unfortunately, you've been given a pill that makes you go to sleep and never wake up.
I appreciate you sharing that. My mother was an opioid addict, smoked for 40 years and died of lung cancer. And I come from a long line of alcoholics, so I don't think that you're alone. And in my humble opinion, there's people in this room and other places that need to hear that. So I thank you for sharing it. I don't mean to call you on the carpet, but I thought you might share, and I thought I would share.
No, absolutely. I appreciate that. I love to champion my sister's story as much as possible. Obviously, it can be a little sore subject at times. It's only been a couple years, but I love to, as much as possible, champion her cause and let people know. Like even the president of Johnson County, the Student Senate President of Johnson County Community Colleges, somebody who can be affected by this. So it's not what people used to think, where it's just poor people or the minoritized people of society. This opioid epidemic and the drug crisis is something that affects everybody everywhere, and that you're not alone in dealing with this, whether it's yourself going through addiction problems or it's your family members going through addiction problems. You're not alone in that there are resources and people out there who are willing to help you or talk to you or even give you advice if you need that.
One last thing, Madam Chair. You've already reached out to me, Logan. Please don't hesitate to do so in the future.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Ratan.
Well, hard to speak after that, but sorry. I appreciate your leadership, and I hope that our paths cross again in the future. And I see great things for you and your future, and never lose your voice. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I did happen to have a one-on-one with Dr. Korbe and saw the Cav Craze, and congratulations again on another Cav Craze. Looked a lot of fun, a lot of energy. The tacos were great. And I love that all the clubs, resources, four-year colleges, there's a little bit of everything at the Cav Craze, and it's just a really great event for students.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I know we are friends on LinkedIn, or at least I follow you on LinkedIn, so I'm sure we will be seeing at least a little bit of each other again. But yeah, thank you for those kind words. Cav Craze is not explicitly like our event, but we're super proud to be a part of it and making, doing everything we can to make sure it's the best event possible, especially with the last week before finals. People really need that time to enjoy some tacos and just breathe and unwind and just celebrate all the hard work they put in this semester.
I, we're going to miss you. We're going to miss you a lot. One of the things that I've so appreciated in listening to you, Logan, is the way you shine a light on the giving back pieces of our students and all that they do for the good in the community. And I think sometimes we need to be reminded of just how important it is to play that role. And you've done a great job of shining a light on that, so we thank you very much. And I hope to see you again because you're just a fantastic human being, Logan. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Next up is the college lobbyist, Mr. Dick Carter, and I'm sure that you have absolutely nothing to share.
Well, I just have an abbreviated form of issues that I'd like to share, taking my lead from the legislature with their abbreviated schedule. I'll try and get through this pretty quick. I want to talk a little bit about something that happened just today, and that is the appointment of several interim committees that I'll be following. And it's not the first, or it's the first of several. I think we'll have another round of committees appointed for summer and fall study in June as well. But today, a set of coordinating council met and approved several committees to meet. And I'm going to just kind of highlight what I'll be watching for. There is going to be another special budget committee that will be meeting throughout the course of the summer and fall months, and they will be reviewing expenditures and revenues from various state agencies that operate in Kansas government. And that one's obviously important to us as we continue to watch how this legislative budget development process works. That group will be meeting over the course of the summer and the fall. We'll also be watching the approved committee of Economic Development Programs, Incentive Programs. That committee will be reviewing and evaluating those programs that are being offered. They impact not only the businesses in our area that would receive those incentives, but also that's where some of those programs also lie for, the funding for the programs lie for apprenticeships and such-type programs. We'll be watching those and the review process of those programs. Occupational licensing and reciprocal agreements is another area that we'll be watching. Once again, we're training folks in various professions here at the college, and anything that would negatively impact or reduce the ability of what we train and teach here is something that we would be very concerned about. And then finally, well, not finally, there's a couple others after this one, but the Education Funding Task Force is a special committee that's meeting, and we'll be watching what recommendations come out of that committee as well and the discussions that are occurring because that sometimes overflows into, there's always this pull and give program with K-12 education funding and some of the work that we do, especially some of the concurrent coursework. And so we'll be watching what recommendations come out of that committee with regard to funding streams. The Blue Ribbon Study Panel for the two-year sector is still in the works. We've not seen any names. I don't know when we'll see those names. I'm assuming that that could be a June-type of timeframe for an announcement, but that group will be meeting over the course of the summer and fall as well. And then we do expect additional committees to be assigned and/or named at the June committee meeting for the Legislative Coordinating Council. And again, that Legislative Coordinating Council is the group of legislative leaders that meet and make administrative recommendations and approvals when the legislature is not in session. Not to be confused, just again, for purposes of defining the process, the State Finance Council is that same group of Legislative Coordinating Council members plus a couple of others. The governor sits on that. There's a couple of other folks that sit on that, that State Finance Council. So they make the financial decisions when the legislature's not in session. We'll continue to monitor that process. No dates have been set. They still need to name committee members for the ones that I just talked about, so we're a ways off from anything happening yet. Next, I want to talk about probably what is on everyone's mind, and I'm anticipating a few questions this evening, and that is sort of an idea of where we're at with regard to federal funding and recommendations that are coming out of the administration and what Congress is doing in DC. That is a tough, and I'm assuming there will be some questions, and I'll do my best to answer them, but it's, I'm going to give you a little bit of a precursor that it's a changing environment on the daily. And so the answer today might be very different than what the question and/or answer is for tomorrow. There's a couple of areas, three areas, that I'd like to touch on that would have a significant impact at Johnson County Community College. The first one being Pell Grants and the recommended changes that are in the House Reconciliation Bill being discussed right now. And that would reduce the eligibility of certain students if they're not taking 15 hours. That's the recommendation currently, that in a semester, they would, if they're a part-time student, they might not be eligible for Pell Awards. That overall amount, so this would be the total amount that we see on a per semester basis is about $7 million from Pell. So again, it would be some portion of that that might not flow toward the students who benefit from those dollars. The Association of Community Colleges in Kansas is submitting a letter that all 19 college presidents have signed on to, to Congressman Schmidt's office, raising the awareness of not only that issue, but also the risk-sharing portion, which would put back on an institution part of the obligation if someone doesn't follow through with their academic career, meaning there would be some payback or clawback components to that. The other piece that I want to talk about with regard to what is in the reconciliation bill is the Perkins funding for technical education. That amount is a little bit more difficult to define, and it's also a smaller number. It's a little over $500,000 for the college, and that would also be one of the recommendations that would see a reduction or an elimination. Let me transition now to something that is probably very, well, not probably, something that's very important and a service that the college provides that you don't get to see elsewhere, and that is the adult basic education portion. Last week, the White House released the president's FY26 discretionary budget request, which includes a recommendation to eliminate funding related to adult education, such as GED preparation, English language learning. And this threatens the Johnson County Adult Education Program, a federally funded program supported with additional state and college funds. The president's budget requests must be reviewed by Congress, so they will be going through that process, and that process will take place over the next few months. During that time, we will continue to monitor the situation and work with our contacts, both in Topeka, at the Board of Regents Office, as well as Washington, DC, to educate them around the impact of adult education in our region. I can tell you that not only have I been in contact with the higher ed staff members in our congressional offices and in our senate offices, but those folks that oversee those programs are in regular communication as well, not only with the folks at the state level, but in DC as well. And it's a constantly changing environment, which makes it incredibly difficult to anticipate and plan for things like budgets for next year and depending on how far that goes out. So I think I would stop there and see if there's any questions that I can answer. I would just say that it's very concerning. Normally, we talk a lot about the state appropriation process, but right now, we're shifting gears a little bit to talk about what those federal dollars that come to Kansas City are.
All right. Thanks for that, Dick. Questions for Mr. Carter? Trustee Cross.
What was Congressman Schmidt's letter?
There is a letter that the Community College Association will be sending. I don't believe it's gone out yet, that addresses, raises concerns about the recommended changes with regard to Pell Grants and the risk-sharing portion that a college might be responsible for, for some payback.
Don't Pell Grants and federal financial aid help the rural poor a lot?
Yeah, they're need-based programs and certainly...
Only I was sitting in a room full of education professionals who could answer that.
When you talk about the Pell Grants, you said less than 15 hours, but 12 hours is considered full-time, correct?
Currently.
Okay. And then the second question is, you said if the impact would be to reduce it by $7 million or the overall number is $7 million?
Our overall number that we see on a per semester basis is $7 million. There could be some portion of that $7 million that we...
A portion of it, okay.
Students would not realize who attend JCCC.
Okay. Thank you so much. And I know when we went to ACCT in DC, we made sure when we went and talked with the senators and legislators that we wanted them to know that we were worried about Pell Grants and asked them to protect that and share that Pell Grants are very impactful at JCCC. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Trustee Hamel.
Why was it sent to just, sorry, I'm trying to recall the name?
Congressman Schmidt.
Yeah. Why was it just sent to them?
He's on one of the committees that'll be reviewing that legislation.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your report. I think probably the most square-on thing you said was that it changes every day, and so it makes, and that's true across the spectrum in terms of what's coming out of Washington. It's interesting to me that the things that you've outlined with respect to federal funding affect perhaps the people who need it most. And I would make the observation that by reducing Pell Grants for part-time students, that has an inordinate impact on community colleges because such a large percentage of our student population are non-traditional students, like I was, who are coming to college on a part-time basis. Now, I didn't receive a Pell Grant, but so many of our students depend on that while they're raising a family, while they're working other jobs. And the same can be said of our adult education programs, the people who need it the most. So carry our water, you know, the best you can, and we'll just hope that Congress can see the impact that that would have on the vulnerable populations of our country. So thank you so much for your continued work. Appreciate it. All right. Next up is our report from College Counsel, and Jason Arnett.
Always hard to follow, Mr. Carter, so I'll do the best I can. College Counsel met yesterday. Staff Counsel will meet next week, and Academic Branch Counsel has finished their meetings for the year, the school year. At the end of April, Staff Counsel held its open house and was well-attended by several campus luminaries, some of whom are in this room. So we appreciate everybody who came out to see us. In College Counsel, last month, we began to review our bylaws. We continued that this month with some really lively discussion, and we're considering some changes that align us with the council's committees and task forces guidelines that the colleges provided us. Even though we're going to vote on things next week, I can share that, or next month, excuse me, I can share that it was generally agreed in the room that the current structure needs the addition of a secretary position, which we don't have, which will make those of us serving in the co-chair role a little bit easier down the road, as well as we'll continue to have a note taker in the room who is capturing a lot of stuff that we might otherwise miss, and then I get to share it with you because I read it in the notes. The co-chair, who is not the president, and the secretary will be elected from eligible members of the College Counsel, and we'll have that election in July with the new president. And I haven't said this in a while, but I wanted to kind of wax a trifle philosophical and say, remind you that we are committed, those of us serving in shared governance, we want to ensure that it's perceived by everyone to be important to the college, not just the board or the cabinet, but everybody from the bottom up. Everything we do, defining and refining our processes and transparently and clearly communicating what we're working on and seeking input and information by actively listening to everyone, from baristas to board members, is designed to strengthen that shared governance process across all the councils and the college itself. Everyone involved is giving their time and a lot of necessary bandwidth to make sure every voice is heard, and that collaboration is seen as key to success for all of us, and that the participation, and that participation at every level is not just desirable, but welcome and necessary. And that's what's guiding us here at the end of the school year and into the foreseeable future. So with that, that's what I have for you this month, so.
I like it when you wax philosophical. Any questions or comments for Mr. Arnett? Thanks for your report, and you're absolutely correct that engagement is the key to successful collaboration, so we appreciate everything that you do for us, Jason. Thank you so much for your report.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the Faculty Association, and I believe we're going to hear from Andrea Vu this month. We love it that you delegate and we get to hear from other folks, but we also enjoy hearing from you, so I'm glad you're here.
Yes, and this is the last one that I will be here for, maybe. I mean, probably. I'm not the president after this, is what I'm trying to say. I'm not the president after this, is what I'm trying to say. So, I am Andrea Vu, and I'm the current president for the moment. I do want to extend a belated congratulations to Dr. Tony Mixa, who was selected as our new college president. I was not giving the report around the time that he was selected, and so I did not have the opportunity to kind of say that here, and so I just wanted to say that the Faculty Association is very excited to have you for our next chapter here. Relatedly, I do also want to congratulate the new set of new incoming officers of the Faculty Association. The president will be Dr. Irene Olivares, who you have met before. Jim McWard, in English, is going to be our vice president. Danny Alexander will continue as the secretary/recorder. Lisa Parrot from Business Administration will continue as treasurer. Amanda Glass from Chemistry will continue as the UNISERV rep, and then, of course, I will be the immediate past president for the next few years, I guess. I think it's a good group of folks who'll be a nice complement to Dr. Mixa and be able to kind of work alongside him and do a good job of representing the Faculty Association. So, congratulations to Irene. Since I haven't done a lot of reports lately, and this is my last one, I just thought I'd kind of give you all I've got right now and then close out on an ideally positive note. This role is really interesting and super challenging at times, and so it was, for me, I think one of the nice things about it is getting to learn about all the different people around the college and the work they do. I can't remember what meeting I was in recently where we were just talking about how much, like, interaction we each have with each other. We're not little silos. We kind of all have to be able to work together, and that's something that's really highlighted when you're in, like, roles, what Jason and I are doing right now, right? Just meeting a lot of people. So, getting to know the faculty and the employees is really of the utmost importance in organizations like this, and to being successful within these organizations. So, meeting people, getting to know them, working towards building positive relationships with people, and that has been one of my personal goals in this role, but I am also a human being that is capable of making mistakes and ideally hoping to learn from those things. So, I'm not perfect, but I do think that I, or hope that I learned a lot along the way throughout these last couple of years. In a past meeting, Trustee Rail had, was talking about celebrating some of the shared governance wins that Jason Arnett has talked about, and so I really wanted to highlight why I think shared governance worked at those particular instances, without getting too far into the weeds, but there are several things that Staff Counsel has brought forth to College Counsel, which College Counsel leaders, past and present, did extensive work on. One really good example was that communications report that started with something that was sent to Staff Counsel, and then they basically created a subcommittee at the College Counsel level to really research that. They did a bunch of surveys and focus groups with various stakeholders around the campus. They prepared a preliminary report, and then went around to all the different groups. So, they went to Cabinet and College Counsel and ABC and Staff Counsel and Management Topics, and just got everybody's input, and then they updated and revised for the final version, and then communicated out the final version to everybody. So, it was kind of like, here we all are, you know, trying to hear from people, but then communicating back about what the result was. And so, I think that was a really good example. Another recent question about college awards processes was brought forth, and there was an extensive discussion at College Counsel, which, again, led to a subgroup that engaged with key constituencies to hear what their concerns were, and then talk through some of the challenges of just the changes that were being suggested, so they could understand those, come up with a potential resolution, and then share the resolution back with key constituents. So, the final resolution was agreed upon and shared back at College Counsel. Key highlights from both of these wins, as I kind of think of them, is like, seeking a clear understanding of what the concern was that was being expressed by whoever brought it forth, right? Engaging in a dialogue with key stakeholders at the time that the decision-making process was occurring, to understand the perspectives, and then any challenges that might arise with potential solutions. Making a clear decision and then explaining the why of that decision, so that, like, clearly and consistently communicating the decision back to everybody that was involved with it. Yes, it takes time to do that. Like, these are not, that communications report probably lasted the whole time that I was the FA president, or at least a year and a half. It does take time to make collaborative decisions like that, but the end result is that people feel that they're heard, they feel that they were included prior to decisions being made, and they understand the reasoning behind final decisions. All of these things actually go to bolstering employee satisfaction and just general, like, creating a positive workplace culture. Faculty reside within interesting roles here at the college, so we're educators, we're librarians, we're counselors, and these roles, students, serving students is our primary function. For example, as a teaching faculty member, I teach classes and mentor students, but we also serve the college in a lot of ways, so like, serving on committees, councils, task forces, bringing cool speakers and events to campus, serving our professions and convening professional conferences here, working with our college now office and supporting our K-12 partners and whatever through a variety of programs, and you've, you know, learned about a lot of those as your time on, in the board, and then advising student clubs, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I can list a whole bunch of things that we do. We're really lucky to have highly intelligent and qualified faculty here who engage in research activities as well. In fact, programs like the sabbatical opportunity that kind of support that third prong of faculty roles is a really, like, kind of a blessing, kind of being here enabled, like, enabling people to do that research. While research might not be required here like it might be at a four-year institution, it is still highly connected to our other two roles, the teaching and the service prongs. And the research that, like, for example, I have done in graduate courses or beyond has actually made me a better teacher. There's graduate coursework that I was doing when I first started working here that has actually benefited me in this role in terms of understanding nonprofit organizations or higher education institutions, you can just think like administrative bureaucracies, if you will. And it's also informed my service work. So, while it may not be required, it is actually relevant to how well I do my job and fulfill my other obligations to this institution. One of the big things about research is that you need time to do it. Hence, opportunities like sabbaticals, the great thing about ensuring that we're providing our faculty and employees, more generally, opportunities to learn and adapt their learning to job duties, is that it gives our employees flexibility in their work. It is a growing trend of today's workforce to seek out employment at places where they have agency over their work, at places that recognize the importance of time, at places that allow flexibility and variety of work. I'm definitely someone who would get bored by doing the same thing all the time, but there are also other people that would prefer to do the same thing all the time, right? We're not all the same, but being in a place that provides the opportunity for all types to find meaning in their work is really kind of a blessing, and so that's one of the things that I like about working here, is being able to tap into all these different things. Even though I'm happy that my term as, like, second term as FA president is coming to an end, I'm also thankful that I was provided the release time so that I could have that time needed to fulfill my typical duties and all of this other stuff that comes along with being in this position. It's stressful. It requires time and energy, and the release time was a key to my being able to keep an eye on my mental health throughout the last several years of doing this work. In the big picture, there is no one-size-fits-all model for faculty or employees more generally. It's important to recognize the role of time for faculty at being their best employees and fulfilling their roles to the best of their ability, also in being fulfilled in their work and being satisfied in their jobs. For my last little hurrah here, I do want to say thank you to all of you. It's been a pleasure to serve in this role. I will, of course, still be around. I just won't be doing this, so I will see you around. I just won't be here, I think is how you said it the other day. But since it's my last report, I also want to take an opportunity to say thank you to Dr. Judy Korbe. Sorry, Judy. Being able to work with Judy this last year and a half has really been a wonderful experience. Judy, we have not always agreed, and I know people won't believe that I say that, but we haven't, and I have really appreciated getting to hear your thoughts and working through things with you. I think I joked about a year ago that I would, every Monday at 8:00 AM, message you, like, "I have a thing," and that did happen several times, but I will say, I waited until Monday morning at 8:00 AM, so we got that going for us. I know you're completing your time as interim president here, and I really want to say thank you for me and the Faculty Association for your continued commitment and service to this college, both in the last several years, but just historically, like, the commitment to this college is, like, you truly exemplify what it means to be on the Wall of Honor, and I don't mean that as a joke. I mean that as a literal, like, truly, your commitment to this college is far and above. I have a lot of other things, but I do want to say something Melanie should have said last month when she was here, is that she's hosting a chemistry educator conference on campus at the end of this month, and it's using high-impact practices to empower chemistry students. So, even though she was here, she didn't brag on herself, and I thought that was kind of a missed opportunity for her, so I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments? Trustee Ratan.
I want to say personally that I enjoy getting to know you, and I think a couple of times, we solved all the problems in the world, not just JCCC over coffee. So, thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership, and I know even without the title of FA president, you'll continue to be a leader just because of the person that you are.
Well, thank you, and I do also, I should say, I probably will still try to be getting coffees with people, because that was one of my favorite things about this, but thank you.
And then, I also want to say congratulations to the folks who put together the STEM Poster Symposium. It was another great event.
Yes.
Bigger and bigger.
Lori and Brenda were the two organizers. That was a fantastic event.
Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Professor Vu, thank you. I never know how to deal with your issue, or the issues you raise exactly. It occurs to me, your personality completely changed when you took this position. You were always like some quiet book mouse, and then you took the job, and all of a sudden, you're the lady in charge, and it was a sight to see. The closest reference I can think of is, it must have been like that to people to watch Harry Truman step in and go from this quiet guy in the corner with a glass of scotch to the guy in charge, and like, oh, that's what he's like. It's like, so I think you did a remarkable job, and it's always interesting to teach people, particularly administrators here, about why they have to deal with the Faculty Association. I'm like, well, there's this thing called the First Amendment, and there's the freedom of assembly, and then those crazy people can contract. It's another freedom. So, it's a heck of a job you do. I've never seen anybody have quite your leadership style in terms of delegating out speaking responsibilities. Most of us jump at those, but you always delegated it. So, it's a remarkable style, full of grace, and yet criticism, even if a loyal opposition, you're still loyal to the institution, and I think that's remarkable. So, thank you for your leadership.
Trustee Hamel.
Andrea, having coffee with you is also a great, I've enjoyed it quite a bit. It's one of my favorite things as trustee, actually, over the last year or so, and one of the things interesting that I was thinking about was a Harry S. Truman quote as well, and most people probably know it. "It's amazing what you can accomplish if you do not care who gets credit." And that's what I think about you as well, and your leadership style, what Cross is talking about as well. And so, you've done a great job, an amazing job, in lots of ways, and I know the college would have been better for having you in this role, so we appreciate it a lot.
Very much appreciated from both of you. I should say, like, I don't like to take credit because I'm not the only one doing the things, so like, there's a lot of people doing things, just you just see me here, so that's a problem.
See, there you go again.
I'm sorry.
Deferring the credit.
Can I say something? This is trustee Gilling.
Trustee Mitchell, trusty Mitchell is, oh, go ahead, trustee Gilling, go ahead.
Okay, because I'm on the phone, so I can't see anything. Andrea, I just want to say, number one, I appreciate the fact that you reached out to me as a new trustee, and you were honest, you were social, you were listening, and you really represented the faculty so well. I have learned so much from you, and I appreciate your leadership, I appreciate your friendship, and I appreciate the honesty and your passion in which you have done this work. So, you know, I know we'll go to coffee again, but I just want to use this platform to let you know how thankful I am for you being in this leadership role.
Thank you very much. Trustee Mitchell.
Yeah, I was just going to say two things. One, the only Truman quote that comes to my mind right now involves expletives that I think would be bad form for me to repeat in this venue, but it has been a pleasure working with you, and I share everybody's experience as well. I've enjoyed working with you quite a bit, and I expect we'll continue to going forward.
You know, I've worked with a number of Faculty Association presidents over the years, and I guess, and I certainly echo the sentiments of my colleagues, your humility is always present and always appreciated. But I think the thing that I hope others can follow that you have always done so well is take a position when the position needs to be taken and be able to support why that position is important. Don't just argue to be arguing, but take the positions that are important, because there's only so much bandwidth for us, and so, talk to us about the things that are really important, and I've always appreciated that you've done that. So, thank you so much for your service. You'll still be around, and I bet you'll be back in that Faculty Association presidency someday.
You're not rid of me yet. No. Sorry. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Johnson County Education Research Triangle Report. Trustee Smith-Evert is a bit under the weather this evening, so we will not be having that report. I know they did not meet yet, so she'll be giving us her report next month. So, that takes us to the KACC report, and Trustee Cross.
Madam Chair, thank you. I don't really have a report. We didn't have a meeting this month. We will meet again at Highland Community College, May 30th and 31st. I think trustee Hamel will be there, I believe. I'll be in Washington DC with my son's class. I would say I thank Mr. Carter and all of our legislators and representatives who are working for higher ed and for the community college movement. That's critically important, even if we don't always agree with them. It's incredibly important service we provide to the state of Kansas, so. We'll meet in May at Highland, or later this month at Highland, and Mark and I will be able to have a report next month, so thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Trustee Cross. Next up is the Foundation Report. What do you have for us this evening, Trustee Ratan?
I have a lot, trustee Rail. So, a $50,000 gift to JCCC Foundation has established two new funds, an unrestricted endowed scholarship and a fund to support emergency needs directed by the Student Basic Needs Director. The Nerman Museum received a $100,000 donation, and that is to support museum acquisition. The Hall Family Foundation approved a $30,000 JCCC Foundation grant request, and that's to support performing arts education program at MTC. The Clegg family has completed payment on their $98,000 pledge. This is going to fund 32 student scholarships, 20 for CTE, six for dental hygiene, and six for fire science. On May 1st, the JCCC Foundation collaborated with the STEM faculty, and that was to raise money for scholarships for students who participated in the STEM Poster Symposium. Ash Grove is a new and lead sponsor for this event at $5,000, I think it's Concrete Company?
Yes, it is.
And they were there at the symposium, and nearly $14,000 was raised to support STEM Poster Symposium winners. Tickets and sponsorships are selling fast for a Match Made in Heaven Gala that is scheduled for May 10th. To learn more about the sponsorships for that event, visit www.nermamuseum.org/match. Say the date, the Third Annual SIPS and Scholarships Event is on June 26th at the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. Cindy Green and Tracy Osborne-Ogden are co-chairs this year. Please share the invitation with friends and family and RSVP by visiting www.jccc.edu/foundation. New, Hawthorne Bank has agreed to underwrite the entire event, so all donations will support student scholarships. Town Center is also putting together a special raffle package, shopping for scholarships, which will add a little bit more fun to the event. Next, JCCC Foundation hosted a student scholarship luncheon. It was attended by approximately 80 students, and the stories shared helped highlight the impact of scholarships on JCCC students. You are invited to the J- You are invited to the JCCC Foundation End of Year Lunch. It's on May 20th, and invited speakers will be Chair Melody Rail and JCCC Model UN President and Foundation Scholarship Recipient Nerissa Hampton. Some Enchanted Evening sponsorships were announced on May 1st, and for more information, Johnson County Post ran a wonderful article about our 2025 Johnson County of the Year, Jon Stewart. You can find that at johnsoncountypost.com. A sneak peek, the Independent Magazine will be using some enchanted evening as the cover promo for their May edition. Kudos to our incredible marketing team who designed this incredible cover. That completes my report.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for Trustee Ratan?
I have two quick things. If you haven't read the Post article about Jon Stewart, I would encourage you to read it. It's very well done, and Jon is a testament to how education changes lives. And so it's a great article to read. And second, if you can't make it to SIPs and scholarships, which hopefully will, it'll be a great turnout, but if you can't make it, there's an opportunity to donate. If you just go online, you can donate to the scholarship fund, and I would encourage anybody to do that who can't make the event.
All right. Thank you for your report. That takes us to the committee reports and recommendations, and first up is the Audit Committee Report. The Audit Committee meeting was held in this room on Thursday, May 1st at 9:00 AM. The external auditors from Ruben Brown were present at the meeting, as well as Trustee Smith-Evert and I. The Audit Manager Cory Robinson shared the plans for the June 30th, 2025 financial statement audit. Jeff Johnson, Director of Audit and Advisory Services, then presented the results of the procurement process audit. He commended the procurement services and accounts payable teams and stated that overall their controls are strong. There were a few tweaks that needed to be made, some minor enhancements is what he characterized them at, but no major deficiencies were identified. The observation ratings ranged from moderate to low risks. Observations have been reviewed with the process owners and administration prior to the Audit Committee meeting, and the administration agreed with the findings and developed action plans, many of which have already been implemented. The next audit will cover IT general controls. Mr. Johnson also provided an update on the current department activities and on the plans for the upcoming quarter. This included a report on the Great Audit Minds Conference, which to me sounds just a heck of a place to go, which he attended. You know, I joke with Jeff about that all the time. I'm just envisioning what the Great Audit Minds Conference must look like, but which he attended in April 2025, and enhancements made to the Ethics Report Line function. The enhancements included a new landing page, a new website address, consolidated web pages, and easier navigation. College-wide communication regarding these changes is coming soon, and of course, these changes are all designed to enhance use of the Ethics Report Hotline. The Director reported on the status of the recommendations from the Payroll Process Design Effectiveness Audit. Of the 14 recommendations made in July, three remain open, 11 have been resolved. The quarterly Ethics Report Line update was also presented by Mr. Johnson. He noted that between January 29th and April 23rd of this year, 15 Ethics Report Line reports were received. One report remains open of those 15. All others have been addressed and closed. Finally, the Audit Committee reviewed the recommended changes to the internal and external audit policies, 210.05. As a result of the review, the Committee made the following recommendation, and those changes are in your board packet if you'd like to review them. And so with that, it is the recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the internal and external audit policies, 210.05, as shown subsequently in the board packet. I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Ratan.
Second.
Second.
We have a third? We have a fourth? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And that will conclude the... Does anybody have any questions about the Audit Committee report?
No.
All right. That concludes the Audit Committee report. Next on the agenda is the Collegial Steering Committee Report. The Collegial Steering Committee met also on Thursday, May 1st, 2025. We continued our robust discussion about the function and sort of work product that should come from the Collegial Steering Committee as a board committee, and that conversation will continue into the next Collegial Steering Committee meeting, which I believe will not be until August?
September.
September. So we'll take that up when we reconvene. Next on the agenda then is the Board Governance Committee Report, and Trustee Mitchell, that one's for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board Governance Committee met at 10:45 AM on Wednesday, April 30th, in this room. Kelsey Nazar led the review on 100 Series Board Policies. They are Board Responsibilities Policy 100-00, Meetings of the Board Policy 112-00, and Special Meetings of the Board Operating Procedure 112-01. The Board Governance Committee did not propose any changes to the policies. Dr. Corb provided an update on the presidential transition. She started by introducing the members of the transition team and their role. Caitlin Murphy is the primary contact, and all communication to Dr. Toni Mixa should go through her. The transition team is building a communication plan and first 100-day calendar. Dr. Corb reported Dr. Mixa will receive all the committee packets and board meeting materials in advance of every meeting, and I believe he's joining these meetings as well. Hello. That concludes my report.
All right. Any questions for Trustee Mitchell?
I would just add that I've been in contact with Dr. Mixa and will continue to be in contact with him. I will tell everyone out there, he is incredibly engaged, he is incredibly ready to lead this institution, and I think we're truly fortunate that we're going to get to experience his leadership, so we're looking forward to that for sure.
And Madam Chair, if I could add, I just wish we could have found someone that had played point guard, not a mere shooting guard.
Okay. Well, there's that.
Thank you.
All right. Bless you. And with that, we'll move on to the Employee Engagement and Development Committee Report, and Trustee Ratan.
Thank you, Chair Rail. Our committee met on Wednesday, April 30th at 10:45 AM. Barbara Cooper, Director of Human Resources, presented information regarding the annual Benefit Review, RFP, for 2026 benefit carriers, and the intention to look into identity theft protection and legal services as additional possibilities for benefits at the college. Mrs. Cooper will perform a... will form a benefits evaluation committee and return with a recommendation in September to this committee. Next, Christina McGee, Vice President of Human Resources, provided an update on the strategic goals of the HR Department, and specifically the three top initiatives which their department is working on, including, number one, updating human resources procedures to help with communication, transparency, and relationship building across the college, as well as refining their processes and placing them in one location on the JCCC Intranet. Two, developing HR metrics to better measure and monitor the department's performance and effectiveness. And three, engaging with a new vendor for a learning management system that will better integrate with the college's current systems, eliminate the need for manual entry, and provide enhanced reporting features. Ms. McGee briefed the committee on HR topics detailed in the last Management Topics Meeting of college directors, supervisors, and other upper-level administration. The HR staff reminded the group about FIML laws, required attendance, and new employee orientation, introduced the creation of new human resources forums, and reported the outcomes of the 2024 360-degree supervisor evaluations. It is in these meetings that the HR Department feels they can be intentional in communicating with supervisors relating to important topics, deadlines, and responsibilities that need to be followed to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal laws. Rachel Haynes, Director of Employee Engagement and Development, presented information on a variety of awards and recognition programs sponsored by the department. Over 30 awards have been presented this year, and recipients were recognized last Friday at an employee awards luncheon. In addition, Ms. Haynes shared some of the positive feedback her department has received from employees and others relating to the classes, trainings that have been offered. Registered attendees enjoy the variety of classes and the continued look at providing new and relevant materials and trainings. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for Trustee Ratan?
Good job.
I would just like to acknowledge very briefly that Christina McGee is a superstar. You're in the back of the room. See, I thought you weren't even here, so you weren't even going to have to react. We are so fortunate to have you as our VP of HR, and the things that I continue to hear about the work that's going on, things like educating our supervisors about how not to get us in trouble, that's super stuff, and thank you so much for what you do every day. Next up is the Management and Finance Committee Report, and Trustee Cross, you have a few recommendations for us.
I do, indeed. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Management and Finance Committee held their meeting at 8:30 AM on Wednesday, April 30th, and the information related to that meeting can be found on pages 12 through 17 of your board packet. The reports we heard, we received the following reports from staff. With respect to sustainability initiatives, Dr. Jay Antle, Executive Director for the Center for Sustainability and a professor of history, provided an update on various sustainability initiatives within the Center for Sustainability and Campus Services. Dr. Antle, with many interruptions from me, highlighted progress made in recent years through the college's power switch program to reduce energy usage and expenditure. He also provided details on JCCC's investments in solar, electric vehicles, and charging infrastructure, water and wastewater management, recycling efforts, and materials management. He also presented updates on activities of the Student Sustainability Committee, the campus farm, and the bird collision study. Other agreements we received reports on included that from Ms. Rachel Lear, Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services, presented an agreement with Bungie Global for the Railroad and Safety Training within the Workforce Development and Continuing Education Division. Details of that can be found on pages 33 and 34 in the Consent Agenda portion of May 8, 2025, of the May 8, 2025 board packet. I am a shareholder of Bungie. I think it's a neat company, and if I don't always agree with them, so I just want to thank the staff for putting that together. Capital Acquisitions and Improvements Progress Report. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facilities Planning, gave us an update on the facilities projects from the Capital Acquisitions and Improvements Matrix Report. The matrix summarizes, monitors budget and actual expenses for the campus services projects, and includes payments through April 30th, 2025. Madam Chair, the Management and Finance Committee has the following recommendations to present this evening. With respect to the fiscal year 2025-26 management budget adoption, Megan Casey, Interim Vice President, CFO, presented the proposed General Post-Secondary Technical Education Funds Management Budget for 2025-26. The college will complete the required notifications and public hearing prior to the adoption of the legal budget for the fiscal year 2025-26, which will be filed with the Johnson County Clerk according to statutory requirements. And at this time, Madam Chair, we'd like to ask Ms. Casey to come forward to the podium to share the proposed budget summary with the entire board. Ms. Casey.
Good evening. Excuse me. So we walked over this proposed budget in greater detail last month, and I just want to remind everyone that this budget book is available on our website. You can search JCCC Annual Budget and see five years' worth of our financial reports. So today, again, we're going to go through the management budget recommendation. This will allow us to begin doing business on July 1. Our legal budget, again, will be adopted in September, so one thing to remember is that that still allows time between now and then if we need to make adjustments or if things arise. So we will share a brief or go over a brief summary of key features of our FY '26 budget. So it includes a reduction of the mill levy of a quarter mill, which will be the fifth mill levy reduction in the past six years, which will save Johnson County taxpayers approximately $4 million. It also includes benefit cost increases in addition to a 4.5% across-the-board compensation increase for faculty and staff. And then it also includes intentional use of reserves to support one-time investments and the Strategic Bridge Plan. The total of those one-time initiatives are about $4.6 million. Even with the intentional use of these reserves, it still will allow us to maintain our reserve levels, which supports our bond ratings and our strong financial health. This slide here is just a recap of the mill levy analysis that we went through as we prepared the recommendation to bring forth and include in this budget. So the orange-yellow-orange highlighted column there is the mill levy reduction of .25. And then this is a summary of our general fund budget, again, including that mill levy reduction. It does show right-of-deficit budget and use of reserves in the amount of $4.4 million. And again, that is because we have budgeted for strategic initiatives and one-time investments. Then next, or upcoming key dates, in August, we will publish notice for the public hearing pursuant to procedures, and then in September, we anticipate the adoption of this legal budget.
All right. Thank you for that. Questions or comments for Ms. Casey? All right. Just for clarity, if something catastrophic were to happen between now and when we adopt the legal budget, revisions can still be made. Do I understand that correctly?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can continue?
You may proceed.
So it is therefore the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the fiscal year 2025-26 management budget as presented by the college administration, and I so move, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Trustee Cross.
Yeah, at the risk of being a tax-and-spend liberal, I would prefer that we leave the mill levy alone, generally. Trustee Hamel had approached me about the possibility of... I always get this phrase wrong.
Revenue neutral.
Making it revenue neutral. I think I'm fine splitting the baby here and following the college staff's recommendation, even if my personal preference is to have it left alone. I do think, as Professor Hamilton laid out, that there's some need to be mindful of tough times coming, but I'm okay with it generally, even if I personally might have differences with it. I know the staff has done their best, and President Corb has a good team, so I'm okay with it.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Cross. Any other comments or concerns?
So I would just like to... So, Trustee Jennings, I would just like to add to what Trustee Cross said. I really have put a lot of time and attention into trying to decide what to do, and I really do trust that we are doing the right thing in the recommendation going forward.
All right. Thank you for that, Trustee Jennings. Any other comments? Trustee Ratan?
I say what I like to say. I think I'm becoming a broken record that every year, if you'd like to know the exact impact of the mill levy and any other taxes, you can go to a website, Johnson County Taxation. I usually know it and have it ready, but you can go online and find your exact address and find your exact tax bill and find out exactly how much taxes you are paying to Johnson County Community College. And if you use the average home price, which is, I think, in the fours right now, I think it ends up being about $1, $1.25 per day. And so especially if you look relative to how much you're paying for your K through 12 and to your county, this is going to be in the lower third, likely in the lower third of the taxes that you pay. And for that, I think it's a heck of a deal.
And we thank the citizens of Johnson County.
And we thank the citizens of Johnson County.
Thank you, Trustee Ratan. I really appreciate that, you know. You know, we spend so much money on so many things, and I think what our community college provides us is an amazing benefit, so, yes.
Trustee Hamel?
Thank you. So, you know, obviously this year, I think we're doing a really nice job of giving it a 2.8% increase for your property taxes. I think the previous three years were between 8 and 6.5, and so I'm really proud of this year in particular. It's one of the best ones we've done as far as keeping prices low as we can. But one of the things that I will say is that, and again, I think we've done better than everyone says anything else taxing entity in Johnson County, but there is a saying that the snowflake doesn't blame itself for the avalanche. And while we may be $1.25 a day, there's a lot of people charging a lot more than that as everybody's increasing. We need to be respectful of that. And this year in particular, I'm more excited about there being closer to a reasonable number of 2.8% increase, so, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I would just say this, there are competing interests here, I think, when I think about the budget for next year. One being that it is undisputed and undeniable that education changes lives, and what better place could we put our money as taxpayers than in changing lives for not only the students who are here today, but for generations to come? At the same time, we can't construct a budget on what maybe, might, could happen, particularly in the current political climate that we're in. It's kind of like, you know, don't sell all your investments just because you think the market's going to drop, leave it there, and weather the storm. And so we can't, we can't make a budget dependent on what might happen. At the same time, we need to make sure that we're devoting adequate resources to education. I think the administration's done a tremendous job of putting this budget together and creating the least amount of pain, if you will. Nobody likes taxes for the taxpayers, and the least amount of burden on our students at the same time, while still providing an opportunity for our staff and faculty to have some increases in their compensation and decreases in their benefit costs. So I think we've created the best that we can out of what we're handed. So with that, I guess we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. You may proceed.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. With respect to procurement report and recommendations, Mr. Jim Fiker, Executive Director of Procurement Services, presented two bids for recommendations. First one is the OCB Rooftop Solar. It is the recommendation, Madam Chair, of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from MC Power Companies in the amount of $271,289, with an additional 10% contingency of $27,129 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total amount of $298,418, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Trustee Hamel?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Tom Hall and Rachel Leers for answering all my questions they sent through email and to the chain, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. You may proceed.
Madam Chair, there's another recommendation we have with respect to active learning multimedia services, MMS equipment. Is this Smart Classrooms?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm just needling Trustee Hamel. Madam Chair, it's the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the cooperative purchase from AVI SPL LLC for the total expenditure of $176,610, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion?
I would like to know how they came up with that LC name. I don't know that I'll get that deposition, though.
Any other discussion?
No.
That was a rhetorical question. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that report.
Good job.
All right, next up is the Student Success Committee report, and Trustee Hamel, I believe you're going to deliver that this evening since Trustee Jennings is appearing remotely.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The Student Success Committee met at 9:45 a.m. on Wednesday, April 30th, and Daughter, Director Honors, presented new courses, course modifications and deactivations, new program, program modifications and deactivations, and general education designations effective for the 2026-2027 academic year. On also presented a course, Deactivation Effective, for the 2027-2028 academic year. More information can be found in the Consent Agenda. Vince Miller presented an agreement for a template to use for student agent clients, agency clients. More information can also be found in the Consent Agenda. Karen Miller, Director of Global Engagement, provided an update on global engagement formerly known as international education. Ms. Miller highlighted study-away programs, which encompass both domestic and international travel. She said there are over 53 faculty-led programs this academic year. Ms. Miller discussed the eight-week Global Awareness Certificate Program, where students were immersed in activities to foster respect for cultures and countries that differ from their own. Ms. Miller talked highly of this spring's pilot partnership with JF Oberlin University in Tokyo, Japan. Students from JFOU participated in a homestay program hosted by JCC, employees, and partnered with 31 students in Japanese-language courses. Ms. Miller said the Global Engagement Department has future plans to, among other plans, to replicate the JFOU Exchange Program, focus on career and technical programs, and articulate projects for dual degrees and two-plus-two pathway programs. She also talked about the Japan Fest that'll be coming up here in, do you know anybody what month that is? Is that September or October?
I can't remember the time.
It's in the fall.
Yeah, so it should be even more exciting, because we have more influence from that culture in that one, and that concludes my report.
Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments for Trustee Hamel? So I have to say, when I read your board report, this Global Awareness Certificate Program was not something I was familiar with, and what a fantastic program to introduce people to cultures, different cultures, and different ways of living, you know, awareness is the first step to acceptance, right? So what a terrific program. I was really excited to see that we do something like that, so. That concludes your report?
That concludes my report.
All right. Well, don't take a breath, because next up is President's Recommendation for Action, and you have the Treasurer's Report for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board Packet includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ended March 31, 2025. Some notes, some items of note, including the ad valorem tax distribution of $3,992,365, and was received in March and distributed to the following accounts: General Fund, Capital Outlay Fund, Special, and the Special Assessment Fund. Also in March, the college made a semi-annual debt service payment on the Series 2017 Certificates of Participation. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended March 2025, subject to audit, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. You may continue.
That concludes my report.
Thank you for that. All right, that brings us to the 2025-2027 Strategic Bridge Plan. You know, we're going to miss that name when the bridge plan thing is over. And Dr. Corb, tell us what you have.
Okay, well, we had a discussion about the final bridge plan at the board retreat last week, but we have ended up with three strategic goals: one, student success; one, employee engagement; and one, community connections. And so after having gone through and looked at all of the strategies, we are presenting for your approval a bridge plan that includes those three goals and strategies under each one of those. This is in the Board Packet on pages 30, 31, and 32. In addition to that, we made a slight revision on our value statements, and so that recommendation is in there as well.
I'm going to read the recommendation, and that, well, any questions for Dr. Corb before I read the recommendation? All right. I'm going to read the recommendation, and then I'll entertain a motion. It's the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees adopt the 2025-2027 Strategic Bridge Plan, goals and strategies, and the mission, vision, and value statements as shown in the Board Packet, and those are on pages 30 through 33, 32 of your Board Packet. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Trustee Cross.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion?
Just want to say thank you to the level of detail that was put into this and the thought that was all the inputs.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I would just echo that, and just to let everybody know, we had a very robust discussion during the retreat surrounding this bridge plan and the mission and value statements of the college, and I think it led us to a place that we can all be comfortable with. I'm really looking forward to us living out our strategic goals for the next couple of years, and I think it sets a good foundation for Dr. McSue to come in and sort of hit the ground running. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Are you ready for your monthly report to the board?
I am.
All right.
So the spring semester is winding down, although that's actually not accurate. We're like accelerating to the finish, I think, is what it feels more like versus winding down. But finals start next week, and planning for spring graduations and celebrations are underway. Check calendars, because we have several graduations scheduled in the next couple of weeks, and it's always an exciting time of year when we get to celebrate the success of literally thousands of our students as they finish up. We've also celebrated with faculty and staff. Last Friday was the annual Employee Awards Luncheon, where 58 faculty members and 36 staff members received awards or were recognized for award certificates or other achievements. It's always a fun luncheon and a great reminder of the amazing staff and faculty that make up the heart of JCC. Of course, everyone that is amazing was not specifically recognized at the luncheon, but you can see them when you visit our classrooms, offices, or any other space on campus, because they are literally everywhere. So we have, at your place, you have a copy of the awards brochure, so that you can take a look at some of those awards and the individuals that received those awards. Already mentioned tonight was Cav Craze, the Student Life and Leadership, hosted the annual event yesterday, and so we welcomed students and the campus community. We actually had over 40 college admissions representatives, 35 campus departments and programs, 18 JCC student organizations, and seven community organizations that were represented there. There were games, giveaways, and other activities. Dining services catering teams served street tacos and nachos to just under 500 Cav Craze goers. So a special thank you to Campus Services Team, because they set up all the tables and chairs and ensured the space and electrical needs were ready for all the festivities. And I, we all had a great time, where it was, it's always fun to see faculty and staff interacting with our students, and it was a great day. If it had been today, I would have had my face painted, so that I could have come to the board meeting with face paint, but it was yesterday, so.
We missed out.
Yeah, you did. But students also had a great time. One, in fact, said, "Y'all need to do this more than once a semester." So they thought it was a great idea. Also, at the bottom of the report are the enrollment numbers. Our summer enrollment is down just a little at this point, but of note is the fact that we started enrollment about a week later than normal, so it's not actually tracking with the exact timeframe as compared to last year. And right now, that lag is in previously attended or transfer students, so we expect that to pick up as students finish up at the campuses where they are and look to us for some summer courses. And then fall credit enrollment is up about 1.2% right now, but it is very early in the process, but it's on track with where we were last semester, so we'll just keep a watch on that. Workforce development, they are at 97.3% towards their enrollment goal of 17,662. So their enrollment remains strong, and they're doing very well as well. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you for that. I know that we only hear about a fraction of the good stuff that's going on around the campus, so thanks for sharing those highlights with us. Trustee Cross?
So, the summer headcount is, that's just a snapshot of where we're at now?
It is, and it's due to just timing. It started about a week later, so it's not comparing with the exact timeframe from last year, so we're about a week behind, so we're lagging. So that's one reason, but we'll see where we end up, but it's showing up in previously attended and transfer students. So the expectation would be when they get out of, you know, whatever school they're going to and are going to come and pick up summer classes like they do, that that will pick up. That's what we're anticipating.
So we can't blame Dr. McLeod yet?
No, not yet. We're not there, you know, we don't, this is not a final number of any kind.
No, I know. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you for your report. Next on the agenda is new business. We have no new business.
Wait, I just wanted to add.
Yes.
And recognize that Mr. Robert Prevost of Chicago, his name Pope today, I didn't want to skip this board's attention, that there's a new Pope.
Okay, so this looks white?
Yes. To Leo XIV. Must be exciting for Chicago.
And for Villanova University.
And a whole bunch of people, yeah, like, it's a lot of Catholics. We live right next to Catholic school in church.
Okay, thanks for sharing.
Yeah, it's new, I, just mentioning it, it's new business.
All right, new business.
I didn't know where else to put it.
Well, that's a good place, all right. Old business. I don't think we have any old business either, although that could have been, yeah. All right, next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is an opportunity for the board to take up in a single motion items of a fairly routine nature. You can find the Consent Agenda on pages 33 through 44 of your Board Packet, and first I'll ask if there is anyone who would like to remove any item from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration. Hearing none. All in favor to approve the Consent Agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion in a second.
You're right.
So moved.
I knew I was forgetting something. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I'm looking at the clock, and I'm ready to go. What's that?
Excuse me. I move we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
All right, and do I have a second?
I second that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Seconded by Trustee Mitchell now. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Trustee Jennings abstains, apparently.
Five-nothing.
Did we hear you say aye for the Consent Agenda?
I did say aye.
Okay. Motion carries five to zero. It was my fault.
It's my fault.
All right.
No problem.
I don't believe there's an executive session tonight unless our general counsel tells me differently. She's shaking her head.
Negative, go straight ahead.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Karen?
Motion carries. Opposed? Motion carries, motion carries five to zero.
Great job.